November 28, 2016. If anyone has a cellphone on, please turn it off, please, so it doesn't disrupt the videotaping. And then if I might ask everyone to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please? Filkins.
Here.
Champlin. Smith.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Schickto.
Here.
Gregg.
Here.
Fent.
Putton.
Here.
We have enough people. Thank you. Uh... I guess maybe before going to public hearings.
Sure.
Uh...so first I need an approval of this evening's agenda, again here for November 28, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Filkins, seconded by Mr. Smith. Okay. Gregg.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Schickto.
Yes.
Champlin. Fent. Peterson.
Yes.
Filkins.
Yes.
Putton.
Yes.
Next, hopefully, everyone had a chance to review, um, meeting minutes from October 24, 2016. Looking for a motion to approve those.
I move to approve the minutes.
Mr. Schickto.
Moment.
Seconded by Mr. Gregg. Fent. Filkins.
Yes.
Champlin. Schickto.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Gregg.
Yes.
Putton.
Yes.
Thank you. Before I get into the public hearing, I'll just make a quick and brief. We have a new, um, member to our, uh, board members. Um, Jeff Valentine is in our audience this evening, and he didn't get a chance to get sworn in yet, so he's gonna observe us by there. Howdy.
Welcome.
Having read that, public hearings, uh, so, um, under A, this evening, we are considering consideration of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to add a homeless shelter overlay zone. Having done that, Mr. Wallace will guide us a bit.
Yes, uh, it was, came to our attention that, uh, we had a group that was interested in, uh, applying for, um, special use permit for a, uh, homeless shelter. And like some of the other issues we've been dealing with lately, the ordinance has been silent, uh, with respect to how to treat, uh, such a land use. And so, uh, I drafted, along with the city attorney, a homeless overlay district. It's kind of a new concept that we haven't used before. What it, what it does is allow us to take advantage of some of the existing districts and utilize, uh, some of those with the added concept that only certain portions of those districts would be acceptable for consideration for a homeless, uh, shelter. Uh, it's, some meetings ago, you heard a presentation, uh, from, uh, the group that was doing the homeless shelter, and they went over in detail the types of, uh, issues they deal with and, uh, went through their whole operations and so forth and so. Based on the information that we gathered, uh, through that process, we drafted a ordinance that seemed to fit, uh, the objectives, uh, and still fit with what was beneficial to the city. And essentially, uh, we, what we found out is that the services that the homeless use, by and large, are in the downtown area. And so, the essence of, of the draft of the overlay district would be to allow a area within 600 feet of the, uh, DDA, uh, district boundary, uh, no matter what zoning district it was, uh, to be considered, uh, for the homeless overlay, uh, land use, still subject to special land, land use provisions. And then there was a number of things that we put in the ordinance relative to trying to make the land use more compatible, uh, with surrounding development. And so, and the idea was that, uh, this district was intended to serve existing populations, not to attract as a magnet, uh, homeless people from other communities or, uh, faraway places because we have a, a better setup, but to truly address the, the local needs of the area. And so, that, that is how the overlay district has been set up. Uh, we've gone over it in kind of considerable detail before, so I won't walk through the entire ordinance, uh, but after the public hearing, if you have more questions, uh, on the ordinance, I'd be happy to address, uh, specifics, uh, on the ordinance.
Okay. Any questions before we open the public hearing for Mr. Wallace, the chance? Okay? Okay? Then at this stage, uh, we will, uh, go ahead here and open the public hearing and, uh, for anyone wishing to come forward, uh, please just write down, uh, tell us your name and write down your address, so you don't have to say that. Uh, so if you're here to say anything, say "for the homeless shelter project," please come forward.
Hi. I'm Brenda Wright.
Brenda.
I'm Brenda Wright, Executive Director of New Hope Shelter. Um, we had a good Q and A a couple months ago about, um, what we do for the community and, um, wanted to thank you for addressing these things in a timely manner, um, because we're kind of on a, we're on a timeframe too with this, this building. Um, I had a chance, John sent me a copy of the final draft, I had a chance to look that over, uh, the new ordinance and the overlay and areas where shelters would be acceptable in the city. It, it all looks good to us. Um, the expectations and outlines, um, in the ordinance as far as guidelines and restrictions and all those kind of things, all look very reasonable and appropriate and doable for us. So, um, we're pleased with it and thank you again for addressing this.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda.
Any questions for me?
No, you did a very nice job at your presentation.
Okay.
Worked good.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience, um, either for or against, uh, the proposed zoning change? Addition, I should say, addition? Okay, there being no other comments at this time, we'll go ahead then and close this section of the public hearing. Uh, pretty upfront to us, I don't know unless we, unless the board asks questions on what we do have for John or anyone, or entertain a motion to move forwards with the...
Yeah, it would be a motion to recommend, uh, to council to, uh, adopt the ordinance as, uh, presented.
So moved. Second. Mr. Gregg and Bob, you were second. Mr. Peterson was seconded there. Okay. Do you need any extra verbiage, Mr. Wallace, on that one?
No, just that move to approve recommendation to the city council as, as drafted, which is what...
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Ann. All right. Uh, Schickto.
Yes.
Fent. Smith.
Yes.
Filkins.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Champlin. Gregg.
Yes.
Putton.
Yes.
Now it goes to council. Okay. Our second public hearing, uh, this evening, uh, again, so we have consideration of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance regarding crematoriums. And having read that, Mr. Wallace will guide us.
As with the, uh, homeless shelter overlay, we've been discussing the, uh, subject of a crematorium land use for a number of meetings. The planning commission appointed a subcommittee, which Matt reviewed, uh, much of the information that I had been gathering. Um, the information provided by the applicant, uh, for them, from the Myring Company LLC, uh, on the equipment was, uh, distributed to all the members of the planning commission. And, uh, based on the subcommittee's work, uh, and also, um, presentations to this board, uh, the essence of the new, uh, ordinance draft would primarily, um, place crematoriums, uh, both for human or pet, uh, within, uh, our two industrial districts. Uh, there is also, uh, an, a provision for a crematorium as an accessory use should that, that use become, uh, legal through, uh, state statute to be in the B3. Uh, in all cases, whether it be the B3 or be the two industrial districts, uh, it would be by special land use and would, uh, have to meet certain criteria as identified in the ordinance. Um, so that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Again, we, we've talked kind of at length about what we've been seeing in not only other communities, but other states and other countries, uh, taking kind of a global look at, at this issue. And, uh, I think, uh, one of the things that, uh, we had some discussion on was whether a separation distance of, uh, 300 or 500 feet, uh, was more appropriate. Uh, for the purpose of the public hearing, we decided to stay with the 300 feet. Uh, you have, uh, a variety of maps, uh, from different sites, both in the industrial parks and the existing funeral homes to kind of show you what those, uh, those distances look like. Uh, so we left it at the, uh, the smaller distance, uh, at least for the purposes of the public hearing. And then following the public hearing, if you want to make changes to that distance, uh, you could discuss, uh, how you might want to, uh, adjust that. But again, not to, to go over in too much detail with things we've already covered. I guess I would, uh, stop my comments there unless there's any specific, uh, questions and you may want to even hold those until after the, uh, the public hearing.
Some of these maps that I have, we were at like 1,000 foot, 630, 600, that was sent to me unless there was typos on those distances. Um, so I'm not sure if what was on our desk, is that the 300 foot mark?
Well, they were supposed to be at, uh, 300 and 500. Uh, there was a duplicate, uh, Mike, uh, did one version from the funeral home and not from the proposed crematorium site, so there, there's one redundancy in there that you see a second one, uh, from the actual proposed crematorium site. And I could, uh, I could call those up on the screen later if that would be helpful.
I'm thinking, yeah, that would be helpful, yeah. Because these don't have notes on them, what we're looking at. Okay. Uh, do you folks need those up on screen, the, what were, you know, these mapy things?
If you can put them on the screen, I, I don't know that they, you know, make any difference with our comments.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to bring those up, John, or something of the maps that we have?
Oh, you want to do it right now? Okay.
We're, yes, gentlemen? I'm just trying, before I open the public hearing, I'm just, yes, please.
I believe this one is 300 feet from the, uh, proposed, uh, crematorium site.
Any idea which number that is that we have?
Number two or number 11.
Okay.
It essentially impacts the existing block that it's on and then it touches, uh, portion of the adjoining blocks and then the impact is, uh, stops at that point.
So what do we think that is? Number two? That is either number one, number two or number 11 that I have.
Yeah, I think it would probably be number, number two. Number two.
Yeah, I'll agree with number two. Well...
11 is basically the same thing.
Okay.
And then if you want, I can, let me know when you want me to move on to the other ones.
So, it's a bigger circle of two, except it doesn't give us the distances.
And some of the confusion might be in that he, I, to put these on here, he might have been having to use diameters, so if it's a thousand, if it says a thousand, it probably means the 500 radius. I think that was a limitation of, of preparing the graphic on the GIS system.
Okay. Is that helpful, gentlemen?
Yes, we'd like to see the other, uh, you said there were, from the other...
There were 500 foot ones.
Okay, this would be, uh, I think the 500, 500 feet.
Those are the ones that said a thousand nine.
Although that one, I think that, I think that's the other funeral home that was in town. I think he did both funeral homes, just to give an idea of how it impacted existing funeral homes.
So that's number three that we have. Correct. I agree with that, I guess.
Yes. And so that, that touches the existing block and, well, all of the adjoining, all of the adjoining blocks to some degree.
And then number four stating the same address, but with 630 foot diameter versus the one...
Yeah, this would be more, this would be more of the 300, uh, the 300 feet. Again, it touches on the existing block and, uh, different degrees, different portions of adjoining blocks, as you can tell, some it just barely touches others, it touches more substantially.
Gentlemen, have a preference for which one you would like left out?
The first one.
The first one. Which is kind of one and two in our packets with different distances. Staff, okay then, right now? Yes?
Uh, and the other thing to keep in mind, I mean, we did this to show spatial relationships and land use compatibility and a lot of those types of issues. Uh, the draft, um, calls for, uh, only three different, three zoning districts to be utilized for what is proposed, and that's the two industrial districts and the B3. Uh, I don't know what the northern funeral home is, uh, zoned at present. Uh, the, this site is zoned OS2, so that would not be proposed. But it was important to see the distance, um, of these, uh, service radiuses of spatial separation, just to, to see how the, uh, you know, sites related to the adjoining developments. And then there's also a number of maps of some different sites in the industrial districts to illustrate that the spatial separation, uh, recommendations could be met at, at certain sites in the industrial parks.
Okay. Do you need to see those in the industrial park?
No, thanks.
Okay.
If I, if I could, just make a clarification. Um, in the draft you have before you, I know that there was, um, we were throwing around some different ideas before, but, um, based on the current state of the law, and John had mentioned that before, um, we believe that there's, um, a difference between the funeral home and the, and the crematorium and that it cannot be an accessory use, that it's a zone principal use, and I think there was some correspondence about that that you've seen previously. Um, and so, the draft you have before you actually only amends two of the zoning districts, allowing for special use in both your I2 districts only. So there's no provision in the one before you, as you can see, on any amendment to the B3. So I just want, if there's a change in the law, we could consider that at some point, but I just wanted to clarify that that's not in the draft before you today.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Okay, if staff is ready, I'll proceed with public hearing. Okay? So at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, um, pertaining here to amending the zoning ordinance regarding the crematoriums. And again, just state your name and write down an address, we're good.
Okay. My name's Megan Myring Brink.
Hi, Megan.
Hello. There's a lot to write down. Okay. So our funeral home has been serving our community since 1932, so we're coming up on this centennial. And throughout those years, and even throughout the few years I've been actually licensed, um, the way that families are handling disposition is changing. Cremation is no longer looked at as the, um, taboo thing to do, it's becoming more and more of, of what families choose and what our community is choosing. So what we're trying to do is just serve our families A to Z. Right now, we have to use a crematory that is a third party and they are wonderful, we don't have an issue with that. The issue is that we want to look at our families when we meet them and be able to say that we are going to take care of everything from, from A to Z and continue the care and take care of, and take care of their loved one in a way that is not in an industrial park, in a way that serves them with the dignity and the respect that someone deserves. And so that if they so wanted to, they could come and they could say goodbye and they could witness, as much as they were wanting to, in a, in an environment that's healing and supportive and not, not an industrial park and that's, that's part of the, um, care that our funeral home stands for and is just a continuation of that. And so that's why the proximity is important to us. Um, and we want to be able to have complete control so that if families have specific wishes, we can make sure that they're honored without having to worry about a third-party consulting and being part of that process, we can just look them in the eye and say "yes" right away. So that's kind of the gist of why, why the map that you see is, is so important to us to have it there. So, that's kind of the, the gist of where we stand and where, why our hearts are in this so, so strongly. Um, it, do we just really want to just continue the process of closure and remove any mystery about it so that everything is right there in front of them and we can answer the questions and have everything be part of our, our, our name, part of us? So, any questions for me, I guess? Is that how this part works, or do I sit down?
No, you're good.
Okay.
Actually, if I understand her right, Ann, that her request would be an accessory that is not on the table.
Well, I just, I want to make sure that everyone's clear about what's happening tonight.
Okay.
Tonight is where you decide, the planning commission, where crematoriums should be allowed and how they should be allowed in the city. So, I know that you have a person up here who is interested in doing that and that, you know, that's, you know, she's out giving you her opinion on that, but we're not deciding whether her use should be accessory or it's, as to whether, where, where, where does this belong in the city?
Where?
You know, does this belong in, in, you know, what district does this belong in, regar- you know, irrespective of a particular person?
Okay.
Because this is going to apply globally to everybody who comes in the city. So, they had, I know there's a couple things going on with this particular property owner with the ZBA and all that stuff, but we just want to, I just want to make very clear what your job is tonight. So, um, if you have any questions about that, I know that John and I could, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions, I guess, for Megan, right now, in front of us?
Megan, you said, um, that you wanted it to be close to your business, right?
Right.
So the family wouldn't have to travel to the industrial park?
Right.
Um, and that, that's an issue because it's not real close or I, I don't, if you had a nice building out in the industrial park, how would that be different than an old garage in the alley behind your...
Well, an old garage, I mean, it's a historic garage that's going to be made, you know, it's not as though you're driving next to a factory that's got a plume of smoke coming out of it and, you know, where you see semis and freight being hauled, this is an extension of our funeral home. So I think the feel is different and the ability to say, "Sure, you want to see where your wife is going to be cremated or where your grandma's going to be cremated? Let me, like, walk you over there," instead of, "Sure, let's get in our cars, you know, make sure we meet there at the specific time, let me make sure I'm not meeting a family and then we'll meet there." It's just the ease of care to, to go right there.
And now you send them out of town?
No, it's, well, technically, yeah, it's out of town.
So you haven't had that experience?
We can, yeah, I mean, we can.
Drive over to Manastee wherever you have to go and...
Yeah, we go down just a little bit south of town, but, um, I mean, our crematory work with is fine and we can do that, it's just the fact that it's not ours and we can't, like I said, it's, we want it to reflect our funeral home and the care that we give families and so, being able to say, "Sure, like, you want to see," it just, it's, it represents us more and then we have control of the whole experience for the family.
Um, I was under the impression that, um, you were using a service in Manastee and I just found out this week that there's one just southeast of Cadillac.
Yes. Yep, that's where we go.
So, do you have the ability to take the families to that place now?
Yes, and we have, but I think families aren't as interested doing that if they know they have to drive, you know, 15 minutes down the road and, and it's, it's, it's a fine place, but it's not what we would do, you know? Okay. And I think more, as cremation becomes more popular, more families are asking questions about that, and as families that get more educated too, they want to know, they want to have their questions answered. And so, more and more families are asking if they can go or asking about the facility. And so that's why this need in our community is more and more prevalent.
Who regulates the emissions from something like this? Does, uh, DEQ or anybody?
I think everybody does. We have an expert that can speak on that.
An expert?
Yeah. Yeah, because I, I know the company that we want to work with is, flies with, passes any regulation with flying colors. any regulation with flying colors, but those regulations are so specific that Ernie can answer those questions much more accurately than I can.
Well, I think that, that one thing that we need to remember, and I appreciate, you know, the way that you've enlightened us this evening, but I also want us to think about our industrial park. Because our industrial park isn't all of the property that is owned within the city. They don't all have these big buildings with these big smoke stacks coming out of them. There's some really nice areas of the industrial park that, that, you know, perhaps you could be successful with, successful in, in giving the service that, providing the service that, that you want to.
Sure. I think, I think, yeah, there are probably parts of it that aren't. But when you say industrial, it sounds, it sounds different. And, and then, yeah, and then the fact that like the property is part of the funeral home, it just, it makes it, you know, like the feel is different and that's what we want to offer. And the ability to, like we say, because driving takes away a lot of, I think, people's, it's just not as convenient for them, and that's what people want, is convenience, basically.
Have you read the city's proposed ordinance that we have, we're given?
I don't know if ours are as up to date as what you have. I don't, have we read that one?
I believe you have the same, same one, because I think it's the only one I've distributed.
Okay. Sorry to keep up with all this stuff that's going back and forth.
Because we were given distances from residential and stuff that they wanted us to look at as the reason.
And that's that circle, right?
Yeah. And they're, they're showing, quote, right, the, the green is you guys, I guess, and the outer circle, I'm not sure the distance right now, but anyway.
That's a 300-foot radius that's up on the
Okay.
screen right now.
In our packet, we were given the, you know.
That is 500. We had 1,000, he's saying the radius is 500.
Radius, okay.
Because the ordinance is written for distance from the facility to the residential lot. And so it would be the radius dimension that you would be looking at.
And so, so based on that, or what we're given, is that if we're within residential touch, which you are, it was the city's reasoning that, that we have to go by.
Okay.
Just explaining what we were given.
Sure.
Which then doesn't make it practical for you to put it there, is all.
Right.
The one that you go to, I'm sure there's probably no residential by it, the one that you're using southeast of town?
Not as, I mean, it's not a city block, so the proximity's different. But there are residences, but.
And that was what I know Mr. Wallace had a heck of a time finding, was distances and, and location of these, so. And, and I totally understand what you're trying to do.
Right.
Makes a lot of sense. Our industrial park is closer than the southeast one. I don't know. Just, uh, so, um, okay. Trying to make you understand what we're given too.
Right.
I guess, all right. I, I don't have any additional questions, I guess, for Megan. Okay? And I'll see, I guess, if there's other people here in the audience here to, thank you.
Yes.
Megan. Anyone else here to speak in favor or against? I'll just open the floor.
My name is Ernie Kassoff, and I'm working with Megan and Ross on a project as a manufacturer of the equipment. I also work with the air quality districts throughout the United States, so I can answer some of your questions. I think the three big questions that I saw that were written, let me write down my name and stuff real quick. There was number one, that's the 300-foot variance. And then there was a question about odor and a question about emissions. So, I can address the 300-foot first. Throughout the US, all the EPA is done by the state. They follow national regulations, but the EPA in Michigan, we will apply for a permit. They will look at all the, the surrounding area, everything, and then they will set the standards that we have to meet. We just recently did one in Brownsville Township in Michigan. Our machines fell way below the estimated emission standards, and it's the third machine that we put into Michigan with no issues. Most of the states, and all that I've seen, and I've done about 94 permits in the last six years, the only regulation as far as with zoning, and again, it's some of what the city does, but by the state, the only regulation they have is that you have to be no close, you cannot have a crematory within 1,000 feet of a school. Okay? And that's an accredited school, not, you know, Jane and John's Home School type thing. So it has to be a, an accredited kindergarten to middle school, middle school to high school, and so forth. And that is, that is all regulated by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. There are quality division. So they set the standards that we must follow. As far as proximity to homes, the closest one that we've done is in Tracy, California, which is in the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which is rated number two in the nation as far as regulations. The closest home we have to our site is, the fence line is eight foot away from the building, and the house is approximately 10 feet, four inches away from the crematory. So, housing has never been an issue. Residential, we're doing one right now outside of Chicago. We're within 300 feet of, of major manufacturing food plant. It, it did involve with, it did involve, the Food and Drug Administration came in, they did their study, and they gave it an approval, and we have the permit for that project already in Illinois. So, homes and other businesses have not been in effect. The only thing they can, they're concerned about are schools. And if you ask me why, I don't have the answer for that. But it's based on, I guess, on a national regulation done by the National EPA Commission. In reference to the, the visible emissions, our company's a little bit different. We don't make an incinerator, and that's what everybody's used to. Cremation and the, in not my backyard situation has always been, and it's, you know, you can, I guess you can blame the internet. If you go on the internet, the only thing you hear bad about is all the bad crematories. And the ones that smoke and do all these terrible things. And it's not like that. I can say that out of, out of our 144 facilities in the US, they're the cream of the crop. They're in, we have, we have a crematory that is in downtown Columbus, Ohio, on Fifth and State Street, in the heart of downtown Columbus. It's been there since 2007. They've done over 18,000 cremations on that site. Never an air quality complaint ever with the state of Ohio. So, we do make a very, very clean machine. And we do that in very, in a couple of different ways. So, location is, with our machine, we just, we do things a little bit differently. We make a cremator, not a modified incinerator. And I'm sure everybody heard about the tragedy in Columbus, Ohio today. I don't think that makes Columbus, Ohio, or Ohio State University, a bad place to be. It's just, you don't hear anything good about it. You know, you don't hear about their good studies, their good medicine, all that. The only thing you heard about was somebody injured eight people. So, that's, that's the attitude that we have about cremation. I want to give you some national figures. In Michigan, in 2014, the cremation rate was 52.6%. In 2015, we're looking at 54.5%, and projecting in 2020, 61.8%. The national right now is 46.2%, and, I'm sorry, 48.6%, and they're, they're projecting by 2020, it'll be at, at 58% nationally. So base, the two basic things in death are either ground burial or cremation. And times are changing and people are choosing cremation. And you asked about, well, it's not so bad taking it to a third-party cremator outside of town. What happens with the family, the family comes in and grieves, and in the cremation process, everything up to that point of final, of the final part, either you go to the cemetery and you bury the body, or you go to the cremator, crematory and you cremate the body. Everything up to that point is the same. Families now want to be at the funeral home, say their goodbyes with their friends and family, and then the family likes to go over to the crematory. And that, that closeness of being able to go across a parking lot to another building right there and not going 15 minutes in a car or whatever, and being able to be with their family and friends at, at the time saying their final farewells is very important. We see the witnessing rate climbing drastically. It's gone up 30% in the last two years. People want to say goodbye to their loved ones. So, that's what I can tell you about location and all that. We'll talk about odor. Odor, and, and we can talk about emissions at the same time, but emissions are created by, by burning a body. There's, there's no doubt about it. How you reduce those emissions is that our machine is built with what we call a primary chamber and a secondary chamber. So we're going to get into some science now. The primary chamber is where the body goes in to be, to be cremated. The secondary chamber is where the air, after the body starts the cremation process, air is forced into the secondary chamber, there's a secondary burner in there, and that burner basically starts degrading the emissions that are coming out. So the longer it's in that chamber, the less emissions that come, that come out of the, out of the stack. So what we do is, we use a computerized system. The operator does not control the cremation, the computer does. It knows what the body weight is, and by, we've been building cremation equipment since 1906. So, we know all the ins and outs, but the idea is it's got to be a perfect combustion. And the way I can explain it to you very easily is you have to go back to your Girl Scout or Boy Scout days, and, or even right now when you're building a fire in your fireplace, and you light that fire and the first thing you get is smoke. Everybody agrees with me, I'm sure, on that. And what do you do is you blow on the fire. As you blow on it, you're giving the fire oxygen. At that point, the smoke disappears and you get a flame. We do the same thing inside of the cremator. We make sure that we have enough oxygen so we don't have smoke. Because combustion needs three things. It needs temperature, it needs fuel, and it needs oxygen. The fuel that we use is the human body, because the human body has enough fuel to burn itself. We, we bring in oxygen through a blower system, and then we preheat the machine so we have the temperature. So if we use finite computer, um, computer system, we can manage that very well. Most, all of our other, all the other manufacturers in the US use what they call an opacity sensor on the stack. So that says, the opacity sensor says, wait a second, I'm being blocked and I'm sending smoke up the stack. Problem with that is, the smoke's going up the stack already, and now you have visible emissions. And at that point, the operator has to go and readjust the machine. We use a, it's a $15,000 oxygen sensing system that we have in the secondary chamber that reads the oxygen every fifteenth of 1/100th of a second and adjusts five air valves within the machine. What that does, it makes sure that we keep the oxygen level between five, between 7% and 9%. You will not get smoke unless you go below 3% oxygen. Smoke also burns at 1,200 degrees. We keep our secondary chamber at 1,600 degrees. So by doing those two things, by reading the oxygen, keeping that level above 7% at all times, and keeping the temperature in the secondary chamber above 1,600 degrees, there are no visible emissions. The only thing you'll ever see out of the stack is, is heat waves, which are not really visible, you have to really stare at it. And as far as odor, take your home fireplace, you light your home fireplace and you start getting an odor. Until the oxygen level is correct and the draft is correct through, through your chimney, that smell goes away. That's, so you can sit in your living room and, and be comfortable without any smoke smell in the, in the, in your living room. We do the same thing. We contain all that within it by making sure that the oxygen levels are correct. So our machines don't have odors, we don't have any visible emissions, and we're very clean. And we're known throughout the industry as the cleanest machine on the market. We're also known as the most expensive machine on the market, because you only get what you pay for. So those are, those are the three points that, you know, they asked me to speak about. I don't know if you have any questions concerning that or?
Can you just mention a little bit your work in Muskegon?
Yeah, we, we put a system in, in Muskegon for the, Saitzma family. They have, they have a funeral home and they have a building that's about 60 feet away that they are using as a crematory now. The machine has been in for a little over a year now. I don't remember exactly how many cremations they've done at this point. We have never had a report from Michigan EPA on any smoke or smell issue. There are two restaurants right next door. The city looked at it, they looked at all our reports, they looked at our stack tests, and they said, you know, if Michigan will allow it, we will, you know, the Air Environmental Quality District, they have no issue, we got that permit, and they've been operating with no problem. Like I said, we've got over 140 locations in the US. I've been with the company a little over six years. I came out of the combustion industry. I can tell you in all honesty, I have never seen a complaint written on one of our machines. And I can tell you in honesty, I've, I've seen a lot of complaints written on other machines. We are, the toughest district in the United States is the Bay Area, which covers San Francisco and that area. We have 33 machines in that area. The second toughest is Massachusetts. We have four machines in Massachusetts right now, they've been running over three years at this point. And we have, we have a machine located in Buffalo, New York, and the New York EPA is one of the toughest in the country also. They had, they had, over the last 10 years, and their two existing machines, they had over 500 complaints on smoke and odor. We've had the machine oper, our machine operates since December 21st of last year. They've done almost 1,700 cremations since that time without one complaint to the EPA. So, the cleanliness and the odor issue is not an issue with our machine. Again, Megan and Ross have, have, you know, worked with me on this, and, you know, they're paying about a 30% more premium for the machinery, but it's because of the quality. And, and it's service to the family. I mean, there's, there's nothing, you know, worse than saying goodbye to somebody and not, and not being able to, to do that and not only be with the family, but be with the friends and support you. And we see that, the more of it happening with funeral homes, being able to have a crematory in a very, very close location where their family and friends are there, they'll go over, they'll witness the cremation, they'll come back and spend time with the family, talking about not the death of the person, but the life, so.
Is there more than one crematorium in Muskegon?
Um, I really don't know. I think there, I think there is another one. I think there, there's been one there for a while, but not in the dis, I think it's outside, right outside the city limits.
Yeah, there is one outside the city limits.
Right.
It looks like it's rather known.
Um, yeah, there is, I think it, I think it's about two years old. I think it was put in about a year before we installed the one at Saitzma.
How about the one outside of Luddington?
Don't, that's not one of our machines, I don't know. And like I said, we're putting one in, in Brownstown, identical system to what we're talking about here. And that one was permitted, and that's in a, actually, the funeral home in the building that's going to be in next to funeral home. There's a big strip center right behind it with restaurants and other businesses.
The crematorium between Scott and Luddington has added situation The crematorium between Scott and Luddington has added situation to have room for the family to have carried a catered dinner in.
We're seeing more of that happen too, because the family wants to celebrate the life of the deceased. I mean, that's, the idea is a complete circle. We're seeing crematories built and called life celebration centers. We have one in Dayton, Ohio, Anderson Funeral Home and Crematory. Their life celebration center, they do not only cremations in that building and celebrations of life, but they do birthday parties, they do, they've done everything from, I was talking to the owner, Charles Anderson, he said in a three-month period, he worked with four generations of the same family. They did a baby shower, they did a sixtieth birthday, they did a cremation, and they did a ninetieth birthday. And so it's just serving the families. And you've got a situation here where you've got a funeral home that's been serving this community since nineteen thirty-two. And since nineteen eighty-eight, you know, the owners here, they want to continue to serve the community. And I don't know if any of you have had any of your family cremated, but, you know, it's not a drop-off-and-see-you anymore. And that's, you know, and it's, what they're proposing is not doing, you know, what we call, you know, low-cost cremations. This is identical to a standard burial, just with a different disposition. Cremation rather than a funeral, than a burial. And up to that point, everything should be the same. And that's something that I feel very strongly with. I do not agree, and I could say I think we have only two of our customers that are basically low-cost cremation companies, and they just, you know, some of the comments that are made about that, but I mean, they're still high-quality facilities and they're very clean. I was just in one in Connecticut that we did, and I mean, you can eat off the floor in that crematory. I mean, that's how our customers keep them, and they've got a big investment. You're not talking about, you know, they're talking about better than two hundred thousand dollar investment for this project. It's a little bit different than putting one in a garage, and you see a lot of those. That's the majority of them. Put them in a building in an industrial park, in a garage, and, you know, pull up the hearse or the van and drop off the body and cremate it and come back the next day and pick up the remains and take them back to the funeral home where the family comes and picks them up. It's now, it's, the family wants to be there, they want to be there during the cremation, they want to be there during the processing of the remains, and they want to get the remains back that day. And at that point, they either take them home, they take them to a cemetery and bury them, they take them somewhere where they can scatter them. I mean, the choices are, you know, unbelievable what people do. I mean, they're putting them up in fireworks, they're doing all kinds of things.
Is there any regulations, since you're touching on that, about maybe places you can't put someone's remains?
Well, you can't put it, you can't take it to your public golf course and do it in the golf course, you know, it happens all the time. You know, I guess unless you get caught, you know, you don't get in trouble. You know, but people, you know, it's like taking them out to the ocean, spreading them in the ocean. You really have to go out three miles, you have to be in international waters, legally you're not allowed to do it. People are taking them in planes and spreading them in the air. There's a company in Tennessee that puts them in gunshot shells for hunters. You know, that's because grandpa was a great hunter, and this is the way he wants to go. Like I said, fireworks, they're putting them in coral reefs now, they're doing a lot of different things. It's just another way of memorializing the life of a person. And so, as Megan said, they want to be able to, if you come in with your loved one, when you put it in their hands, the idea that it's going to a third party, the question is, and that's a personal thing for me, seven and a half years ago, my mother-in-law passed away. And I've only been in this business six years, and I know the funeral director really well. And I know that he used a third-party cremator, and to this day, I know the third-party cremator, I know the funeral home director, and I feel certain that my mother-in-law's remains were in that urn. But there's a little bit in the back of my head that said, maybe not. Because once it got out of John's hands and he gave it to that third-party cremator, I don't know what happened. And so that thought of your loved one is something that, it's very serious. It's very serious.
I have a question concerning the safety zone, maybe like, a crematorium should be so far away from a school.
Right.
But thinking of our industrial park, or any industrial park, if you watch the emissions from the smokestack, it felt was a prevailing wind. And is there any place that's more safe or less, more dangerous?
No, not really. I mean, what people don't understand about prevailing winds is, the emissions that come out of any stack, I don't care if it's an auto plant, or a paint plant, or a crematory, when they come out of the stack, before they start dropping, they have to grab moisture, otherwise they're just going to keep going with the wind. Once they grab moisture, the EPA has designated, it's about five or six miles before anything starts dropping down. So the neighbors next door, they're in the best shape of anybody else. You know, they've done studies on mercury. Mercury normally takes about three thousand miles before it starts dropping. It's a pretty strange thing. That's why the mercury out of all these smokestacks and everything are dropping in the ocean. I mean, how do you think the mercury's getting in the ocean? It's coming from what we're producing and we're sending out to sea. So it's, the studies on environmental, and I have to tell you, the environmental in the states are not getting easier, they're getting higher and higher. I just spoke to the Ministry of Environment this morning in Ontario, Canada. They will have the toughest regulations in North America within the next year. And they'll be close to the regulations in Europe. The European regulations are probably fifteen years ahead of us. And our machines, we have sixty-five hundred machines in Europe. We're a European-based company, we manufacture right out of Cleveland, Ohio for North America. So, but we build to the European standard. And our Vice President of Operations, our Standards Committee, comes in twice a year to make sure that we are building to that standard. So we're very, very, we look at three things. Number one is the safety of our, safety of the machine for operators, because you can't replace that person. That's number one. And the safety of the employees and the neighbors. So we look at that, we build, our biggest thing is safety. The second thing we look at is the environmental impact. Environmental impact in the building, around the building, and the community. Because if we don't get a, if we don't get a green light from the community, you know, it's, and if you go on the internet, that's the only thing you'll ever see, all the bad things. You'll never see anything good, no matter how hard we try to get that done. The Cremation Association of North America, actually, I'm going to be on a conference call tomorrow, we're looking at doing some national promotion on the safety and cleanliness of cremation in the United States. We have to start, we have to start educating the public, and it's education. People are afraid of the unknown, you know, and people are, you know, they just look at the cremator in the garage. And that, I mean, that's, and that's, cremation in the U.S. has been prevalent since the late thirties. I mean, I just, I'm working on a second project right now in Connecticut. The three cremators there were installed in nineteen fifty-three, and they run every day. And their cremation rate right now in Connecticut is over sixty-five percent, I think it's at sixty-eight, too. So our cremation rate in the U.S. is growing at a very fast pace.
So short of, if I understand this right, Ernie, that depending on what city slash city council come up with, the state still has final say if, if I'm stuck?
Yes. The state has final say. They will, you apply for a permit, you have to get a permit to construct and operate from the state, and then the Michigan Funeral Board also has to give their blessing. They come in after it's built and see it operate, and they have to give their blessing before you can go into full operation. So it's, and the state permit is about three hundred and fifty pages long, takes me about sixty hours to put a Michigan one together. It's not one of the more fun ones, I can tell you that. Because I do, I personally take care of all the permitting for North America.
What is that distance, again, that you mentioned, the S.T. from the school?
A thousand feet. And nobody knows why. I've asked, I've asked every EPA board that I've seen, it says, you know, show us a map, show us the schools, and we'll be at thirty-two hundred feet and fifty-two hundred feet. We just did one in Benicia, California, where the closest school is six miles. And one of the people said, well, that's too close to school. You know, and it's like, well, six miles away, let's look at what's in between there. And actually, we put the crematory into, it's the largest munitions plant in North America on the West Coast. So it's been there since the Calvary days. It was also the home of, I don't know, most people don't know it, the U.S. Calvary used camels at one time. And it was where the camel barns were.
Any other questions for Ernie? Very informative, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Mike Filioneni. I'm working with the Myrings. I'm with McCurdy, Watilla, and Portius. I'm going to give you the more dry parts of our presentation, I'm afraid. When I received the notice, the notice says the amendment's proposed to allow crematoriums and pet crematoriums in the B-three, general business, light industrial, general industrial, as an accessory use to a funeral home, or as a special use in the two industrial districts. When I received the proposed amendment, it didn't, as Council and Mr. Wallace indicated, it had no mention of the B-three district. B-three district is really the district that the funeral home on Mitchell Street is in. So it's, I'm not sure what Council indicated was an impediment to providing in your proposed ordinance amendments, an accessory use to a funeral home. State law is very clear that the funeral home operators cannot be the same as the crematorium operators. That's, you know, been the case for a hundred years. That's an issue that, you know, every crematory operator is faced with. Not a problem. All of the state requirements will be met for the Myrings in terms of the operator of the crematory. The accessory use or accessory has a definition in the ordinance now. It's pretty clear that the accessory use is one that is, quote, "clearly incidental to, customarily found in connection with, and except in the case of accessory off-street parking," you know, related to the principal use. Now, what will happen, for example, if you recommend, as I hope that you recommend, which is that the crematory use be allowed as an accessory use to funeral homes in both the B-three and the OS-two district, the district that the Peterson Funeral Home is located in? What you'll have in this case is you'll have a landowner that is, you know, of one identity, a funeral home operator, which is another identity, and the crematory operator. Under those circumstances, it will be the landowner that will be making the application, and the two uses that are going to be made on that land will meet all the requirements of the state law that is different owners, and it'll fit within the accessory use definition in the ordinance. So I'm not exactly sure, and I hope that you revisit this issue, why we would not continue on the path of an accessory use for crematories in both of those districts. First, I think, and foremost, in terms of crafting the ordinance, is your task, which is to protect, you know, the health and safety of the community. You've heard the remarks of Mr. Kasoff. The technology has come to a point now that there are no visible emissions. There just aren't. Because the same technology that allows for no visible emissions essentially allows for no odors whatsoever. To have a spatial requirement in the conditions as are proposed in the proposed ordinance amendment, doesn't, with the exception of maybe some federal regulation of schools within a thousand feet, or whatever that might be, doesn't seem to me to meet any purpose whatsoever. And on the other side, for you to impose a spatial requirement from residential uses, or excuse me, residential properties, under the circumstances, that is, the existing circumstances of the two funeral homes in town, means that these funeral homes will not be able to offer this service that's becoming more and more important in the industry conveniently to customers. And that doesn't, when there is no health and safety reason for it, it seems like it doesn't make any sense at all. If you choose to impose something like that, what you're choosing to do is really not meet what seemed to me to be pretty clear and compelling reasons that funeral homes have crematories conveniently located nearby. You heard the remarks about the, is it Sitzma or Sitzma?
Sitzma.
Sitzma in Muskegon. That is located in an area that is remarkably similar to the Peterson Funeral Home. It has commercial uses very nearby, it has residences very nearby, but it has the kind of technology that Mr. Kasoff described, and it's perfectly acceptable. And it should be acceptable in this town for the reasons that you've heard tonight. There is another funeral home with a crematory on site, Bennett Bars, in Beulah, which is not located, as I understand it, in quite the same concentrated kind of area as Peterson's or Sitzma, but it is, you know, near homes and near commercial properties, and it's perfectly acceptable. And the reason is, the technology is so advanced that in the Bay Area of California, a crematory can be built within ten feet of a residence and have no problems whatsoever. We're no different than that. We should not be imposing the kind of... the kind of, um, conditions without a good reason. And there is no good reason. You know, with regard to the other conditions that are proposed, um, with the exception that, you know, the accessory uses, uh, to a funeral home are not included in what you have in front of you, um, these are, these are, these are conditions that are, are, you know, in our, uh, opinion are self-evident. I mean, we would never propose anything that would have, you know, the kind of odor issues or emissions issues that, um, you find in some of these crazy articles on the internet. Um, you'd never, we'd never propose operating, and no one would propose operating, in my opinion, um, in a way that's not consistent with the state crematory and funeral home laws, or that would operate without the kind of permits that are required. Everything is covered between state, federal, and, um, you know, state business regulations. Um, there is, I see no reason, if your decisions are based on what I believe they should be based on, which is the protecting, protection of the health and safety of the community, there's no reason that accessory uses, uh, an accessory use as a crematory in both the OS2 and the B3 district should not be allowed by these, um, by these proposed, uh, amendments. Any questions?
Any questions for Mike?
You know, we, we did not, I was not a part of the committee, a subcommittee, um, work that was done. We did provide information to John and the contact information for, for Ernie's company. Um, but, you know, we have, you know, we have a special use application pending. We're arguing about why that, why that hasn't been set for a hearing before you. And, and we had that going. I don't want you to think that we didn't care enough about this issue to take part in the, um, discussions before tonight. Um, we did. We just couldn't, you know, publicly, um, take as big a part without, in my opinion, um, affecting what we had pending before you and still have pending before you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in our audience this evening that has any input on our current zoning topic? Okay. Everyone said they're stuck. Perfect. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. And then after that, I don't know what I'm doing, so... I'm looking at staff. That's what I'm...
Would be appropriate time to have discussion. And if you...
Okay.
If there's no discussion, I could offer some comments, but it would be time to explore any things that you think you need to explore, any discussion that you need to, to have before you feel comfortable in making a recommendation.
I guess part of me could see that, you know, based on the information we're, we're getting from this particular manufacturer and the equipment, that the, yeah, it's top-notch. I guess if, if, if things were to change and we, we entertain the B3 as well as the industrial, obviously, part of me would have to say, okay, we're opening something up, but would have to, in my opinion, specify here. If this is in B3, it has to be this grade of equipment. Um, I mean, they spoke, the state of Michigan's kind of got final say here, and they're looking at stuff. And I agree that, yeah, we are here to, um, review public safety and stuff. A lot of good things presented tonight of, of location that, that we're not on that page. So, I'm, I'm just a little more puzzled with that information. So, that's why I'm throwing it out there. Um, I, I understand the concept of trying to keep it on the facility grounds. And I guess since I'm on that, were, were there any communications from residents within the surrounding areas that went out?
No, but that's not unusual in that we didn't send notice out to people within 300 feet, because that, that's a case. It's not before us right now. It was, it was a zoning text amendment, so there was nobody to send to, except other than the general community.
Right.
So, somebody would have had to, happened to see it and be interested in it and then come in. We did not give anybody notice.
Okay. But it was in the paper?
Right.
Can we hear from Ann? I guess, I think, I think you're making an important point. I mean, part of what I want to, what I mentioned in my earlier comment was that, you know, this is a general, ordinance of general applicability, so we're not talking, although most of the comments were related to the site and why they believe that it should be in a different district because that's where their property is located. We have to keep in mind that, one, um, this is going to apply to everybody. And a couple of times, I noticed they were talking about the internet and things, and people that have complaints and that, you know, we may not, to your point, we may not be receiving applications all the time from quality, or as quality. They said they're 15 years ahead of what a manufacturer would be required to do in, um, in the United States. So, you, I would like you, as a planning commission, to consider, you know, not only what they have to say, but consider, this is a general applicability, what would happen if one of the people who are a little behind the times came in. And you have to consider the safety and all those regulations with respect to not only this particular manufacturer, as you said, but with, with any other manufacturer that may come in.
Right. Thus makes it harder.
Well, you would almost have to look at it, and you'd have to get the specifications of...
Oh, yeah.
Of their equipment. And is there anybody at a higher level than their equipment? And then we'd have to have the discussion of if we were going to put it in B3 or OS2, what does that equipment have to look like?
I think...
And that would have to become part of our documentation here, a part of our ordinance.
Yep.
Correct?
Correct.
Right. One of the things you have to look at is, it can't be reduced to a safety issue. I mean, back to the broader point, we're trying to decide what uses fit in what zones and what uses make sense in what zones, not can they be done safely in a certain zone. It's can, do they fit in that zone, given the intent of that district, given the other land uses that are permissible, either by right or by special land use? Does it fit in with that? Does it provide synergy to that? And if it's not, then, you know, it can still be safe, but maybe not a right, the right fit for that district. And so, you have to, it's not only safety, but it's land use compatibility, it's property values, it's, uh, branding psychological issues of things that you have to do in terms of marketing and creating market demand for properties in different districts of the city. One of the biggest problems cities have now today is losing viable market demand for their properties. And if you're not paying attention to that, then you are undermining the potential to have the city thrive or to grow in, in the right kind of ways. So, it, it, you can't, you can't reduce it to a safety issue. And that said, I don't know that we can conclude here tonight, given the information that we were able to find, that it's perfectly safe, um, to have a crematory...